...with liberty and justice or... All right, we won't go anywhere in the meeting. I want to advise everybody that this is being audio and videotaped, and if anyone else is doing the same thing, please notify me now. So, since there's nobody, we'll go to the first thing, which is old business.
Old business, okay. Thirty-seven St. George Road. New firekeeping in Chapter sixty-one A. Per Board of Health, the transaction is exempt from the waiver of written refusal. Board of assessors will prepare and record. Updated when one's purchase is all set. Correspondence from John Condrin, Jr., was forwarded to the building inspector, updated. He will be working with the fire chief to evaluate current protocols and move forward. Dave, from Dave's Woodworking, has inspected the bulletin board, and Wes Warren, he found that the board is in great shape aside from the obvious vandalism. He also found that the hardware, that hardware was missing. He will take care of replacing the hardware within the next few weeks. Comment on that? I actually went up there with that board, we're gonna contact them, because I don't think it was actually vandalized. Just looks like the board is warped. It needs some fastening on one side, the plastic is completely coming off on the other side, the glue has been released, I mean, it was, I think sixteen thousand we paid for those signs? Something like that.
They did not put enough screws to hold that thing.
It's, it's very heavy, the sign itself is extremely heavy, and I just don't think, the last, the hinges never find, I don't believe it was vandalized personally, I went and looked at it myself like they said. So, uh, we are gonna get a repair and have the other signs looked at, but, uh, it's not gonna be a cost for us, he needs to secure that sign a little bit better, it's just, it's literally fallen. The weight of the sign is pulling apart, in my opinion, and I took pictures of it.
Uh, Dan, the old signs are down, are going on. I checked the one in front of the senior center, he said that that's coming apart. And I would assume that if we checked the one in front of the fire station, that's gonna be doing the same thing.
It doesn't appear to be vandalism. I mean, if you really wanted to vandalize it and pull on that, the sign would rip down. It's just held up by, uh...
The heat.
Oh, yeah, and then the weather, the conditions, so. Other old business, I just wanted to go over the LED light program. We're in the process of that. When I met with Kamal from Ray Bar about two weeks ago, we went towards Senior Center, the Highway Bar, and were able to replace, I would say about ninety percent of the bulbs in those two buildings. I was pretty impressed looking at the sample bulbs that he brought in, plugged them into a couple of lights outside the Senior Center, the wattage was, it was half of what the bulbs that they use presently, and the lighting was exactly the same. It was made, their ten years to fourteen years is, is the life of the bulbs. All replacements are free, if anything happens to go before the ten or fourteen years are up, based on the amount of usage, they're replaced for free also. So, it's, it's an excellent savings for the town, it's gonna cut the energy use in half when it comes to Senior Center and the Highway Bar, almost every fluorescent light that Highway Bar can replace. There's roughly maybe three or four percent of the bulbs in the existing buildings from the original one that we did in two thousand twelve that still can be replaced, so that process is ongoing. And we've also contacted the school department, the business manager, and we're gonna be working to have the bulbs changed at all three schools. So, that process is gonna probably start in September, it's gonna be a big process, they agreed to postpone it, to, to hold on to that, the, what they're offering to us and replacing those bulbs for free, so Canyon Lamaca was very excited about that, and the school department's gonna take advantage of it. And one last thing, we're also working on a program to maybe work on our streetlights, um, at, at no cost to the town also, to help replace the bulbs in there and to lessen the energy use in the streetlights that we have recently turned on, so. That is my old business update.
Very good. We're gonna go to comments and concerns, if anybody wish to address the board.
I'd like to get an update on the old town hall phase two.
What do we have on that, Becky, do you know?
I, I'm sorry, did you get to tell you? I don't know.
We will find out from Lorena, and we'll get back to you.
Because, I mean, the last time that we got the estimates, that was back in May.
It was a long time ago. I know that there was some communication after that, and I don't wanna tell you, I'll tell you something, 'cause I'm not exactly sure what it was, I know that they're, if I remember right, they're ready to go out and accept, start accepting bids to, to start the work that was done that we told them we wanted to do. And last information I received, I remember receiving, was saying that they're in the process of going out and getting bids as far as getting somebody in and having them start doing it.
'Cause I thought you did get bids.
We did get bids, but there's some subcontracting work, from what I understand. But again, I don't wanna, I, I wanna make sure we're telling, I'm telling you the right thing, we will get the information from Lorena, and if you wanna stop in, I'll talk to Lorena tomorrow morning, and see if we can get something, and you can give me a call, um, if you have my number, call me at my house, and in the meantime, I will see what I can find from Lorena.
Now, do we pay Lennard Engineering, like, up front to do this work, or, I mean...
No, what happens is, is we pay Lennard Engineering to oversee the work, okay? And then the subcontractors, or the people we awarded bids to, are paid as the work is done.
Right, but if Lennard doesn't do their job in getting the bids, I mean, who are we going to pressure, I guess, to get this thing rolling?
Before winter.
Yeah, well, the, the idea would be, and we actually have pressures Lennard Engineering to a certain degree, we're not, we weren't, that was one of the things we had, we were not quite happy with the way things, by the way things are being held up, and we wanted it to go quicker, we would go to Lennard, and it's, it's up to Lennard to pressure the people that we awarded the bids and so forth, so. As I said, I'll get an update on that, I do know there was communication recently, but I don't remember exactly off the top of my head what it was, usually, usually Lorena would have the information at a meeting, we would, and Becky's not involved during the week, really. So, we will get the information for you, like I said, and if you wanna call, even the town hall, town hall is five seven oh one, I'll talk to Lorena tomorrow and see what I can find out and have her, uh, if anybody calls in, give you the information.
But ultimately, I think it's our responsibility to pressure Lennard.
That's right.
So, I feel, you know, we'll, we'll talk to Lorena tomorrow, we'll have the answer next meeting.
Okay, that'd be great.
And we will pressure, and see that.
How about the survey that they did at the town meeting, do they, any results of that, I mean, are they gonna publish anything from, I think, the findings, are you gonna publish anything?
That was our taking on, um, I've collected them all, I got about eighty to eighty-five back, um, we're gonna, I'm gonna, I've compiled them into one major list, and we're probably gonna try to hold a public hearing or a public information session in September.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
I have a concern about, um, all the break-ins that's been happening in town.
Mm-hmm.
And somebody in my family was broken into this weekend, and some expensive stuff was stolen, and the cop told him that they have a treasure full of stuff that they'll be back, and why isn't somebody doing something about this, you know, isn't there enough of cops around, or what is it?
What did they say, again?
That you have a treasure throw of stuff, they'll be back for more.
That's what he told, told them.
Are we aware of any of that? I'm not, I'm not aware of that either.
That was two days ago.
I don't think you would be either.
I'm not sure I understand what she said.
They had, somebody, they had nothing else to do.
They have a lot more stuff that they can come back after.
They didn't have room in the truck for everything that they had.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
Okay, we'll find out.
I mean, there's been a lot this past weekend, I don't know about them.
Oh, I know about two of them, I found out about today.
In West Warren, two days in a row?
I found out about two of them today. About, about two hours ago. Asked the chief for a hand, or a in writing, or a typed response as far as that we've received complaints, we understand that there's two more break-ins, we understand that residents have been told that there is a surplus, or not a surplus, by quite a few items that have been recovered, apparently, and we would like to have a written update, what it is, what's been, and so forth, and anything that they can tell us about what's going on.
Excuse me, David, nothing's been, nothing's been...
Recovered, it was, they have stolen.
He has a lot more stuff that they can come back after, and they said that they probably will.
Okay.
Nothing's been recovered.
Okay.
That same night, a white truck was stolen right behind his house, and I think the truck is the one that stole his, the, the truck that stole, was stolen.
They used the truck to come back and check out the stuff.
Yes, there was an old man that lives near there that was rocking his dog at three thirty in the morning, and he saw the truck taking the stuff, but thought, nothing of it, thought it was them.
I remember this again, which street?
Wait, wait a minute, no names, though.
No, no, no.
No names.
Okay, yeah, I know where it is.
Let's get an update from the chief, and tell him we'd like to have it for the next meeting, no later than the next meeting.
Well, these people are scared, I'm telling you, because they called him today, and her and him are both scared to death. They went and spent money to put surveillance around their house, and, you know, we shouldn't have to live like that today.
We'll, we'll get an answer. And somebody should be, somebody is working on it, I'm sure, but we'll find out.
Speaking of the chief, now that we know he's out...
No, he's not out. He's a finalist.
All right.
That was yesterday, right?
He's a finalist, so we know that he is pursuing other...
I thought they were supposed to name him yesterday.
I thought they were supposed to name him today, to be perfectly honest with you. They were supposed to name somebody today, I think.
Wednesday? Wednesday, that...
Okay, I know it's this week, for sure.
You know, Wednesday?
So, now, what is our position? Do you form a committee to interview, I mean, if it does happen?
The last two chiefs that we have hired, the Board of Selectmen have reserved the right for the finals, the Board of Selectmen will appoint. We have approved, we have formed a committee the last two times, of five, roughly about five people, um, as residents of the town, to conduct interviews and so forth and combat, and give the Board of Selectmen, depending upon the amount of people that apply, three names, with their recommendation as to which one's the best out of the three. Board of Selectmen reserves the right after, we, we have to do the final interviews in an open meeting, Board of Selectmen reserves the right in an open meeting, the point will they want, but it would be a committee, that's how it was done last two times.
And you try to choose people that have backgrounds in town government, law enforcement, civic duty?
We, we have contacted some people in the past, we tried to get them to serve on the committee. Usually, we try to get a, people with, with law enforcement backgrounds, people with municipal backgrounds such as ex-members of the Board of Selectmen. The current Board of Selectmen always stays out of it until the last appointment, which we don't want anybody to think we had any preconceived ideas going in, we'd rather let somebody, have a committee do it, but would be, we also wanna take just, and I say just, and have as much right as anybody else, residents, that are interested in the position. So, there's no, there's no limit, we can take anybody we want, if we have, we can have an ex-Selectman come in, we do that, if we can have a, people who are in some type of law enforcement, we would try to get at least one of them, and at least one ex-Selectman, and, and then anybody that's interested in are probably the final three. If I remember right, on the last committee, I think we had one, one member that used to be an ex-Selectman, and most of them were just residents from the community, if I remember right.
Do you get a lot of applicants?
Excuse me?
Do you have a lot of applicants, I mean, do you get a lot of applicants for that position?
It depends.
Yeah.
It depends. I'm trying to remember how many chiefs I've been through.
Too many.
Yeah, four, maybe?
Oh, four.
Yeah.
It really depends, sometimes we have seven or eight, other times we have two or three, it really depends on, um...
Who's available.
Who's available, and who wants, wants to come in. Warren is in a little bit stronger position to a certain degree than other people, because our chief is a strong chief, whether that be good or bad, but since they're a strong chief, they have, the Board of Selectmen, no, really, how can I put this, Board of Selectmen used to be the police commissioners, before the strong chief. With a strong chief, the Board are not anything to do with the police department, or, yes, they report to us, but with, with, there's no police commissioners, we're not police commissioners, or anything like that. The difference, the strong chief can, if he wants to hire somebody, okay, we can't hire him, they have to, he has to come in and tell us who we want. Theoretically speaking, he could bring the same, that person back three times in a row, if we didn't appoint him the first time. He is the one that makes the rules and regulations for the police department. The Board of Selectmen, the only thing we can do is say no to them, we can't tell them what to put in, under the strong chief's rule.
So, he's dictatorial?
To a certain degree.
Right.
Okay? Like I said, it used to be, this board acted as the police commissioner, so the board could say, you have to do this, or you have to do that, or we got a complaint, we can handle it this way. Now, under the strong chief thingy, again, anytime there's a complaint, you gotta go to the chief first, after you go to the chief, if you're not happy with the chief, he can then come be with the board, he's the board as the final say, but, again, we can't make rules or regulations, and we can't tell the chief, you gotta do this. He sets the rules and regulation, he sets shifts and so forth and so on, under the strong chief.
So, he, he actually has no overseer?
Excuse me?
He actually has no overseer.
The only overage is, are us, but it's a women's, okay, it's limited. We have a strong fire chief and a strong police chief in town, which the people voted, put in. I'm trying to remember when it came in, I think it came in when McKeel was here, if I remember right, it's because Suriak didn't have it, I know, I know Ron didn't have it, I know it came in after him, so I'm just trying to go back through the street police chief.
So, why was the change made?
Uh, it came as a, somebody's put an article on the annual town meeting, and it was voted on, voted on at the annual town meeting.
But if you... You can reverse that.
Absolutely. But, you'd have to reverse it before chief is appointed. Usually what happens is, we take somebody and put them in charge, we don't, last time we didn't appoint anybody police chief, okay, which was kind of a news of situation, but it basically was because of the strong chief's thing. If we don't appoint anybody as police chief, the board still oversees it, but the minute we appoint somebody as police chief, even though he's appointed, you get that strong chief's play comes in. So, if we hire somebody, it has to be reversed before we hire anybody. The idea usually is, we'll put somebody, if, if the chief were to leave, we'll put somebody in place for the next two or three months, pay him at a chief's rate, but just put him in charge, not appoint him as the chief itself.
In your opinion, which of the two are the better for the town?
You know...
Depends on the chief, so, I don't know.
The reason I'm asking this question...
I'll, I'll give you my answer, okay, and I have to qualify it, please. If the people that live in town want more control of the police department and the police chief, then it would be not the strong chief, okay? If they want to go back to police commissioners being the Board of Selectmen, plus the Board of Selectmen, it's not a strong chief.
If I may?
Yep.
I've been in town for about ten years.
Yep.
I have not heard anybody say anything good about the police department, with this chief in charge and the one prior to it. There's no respect, and I'm saying, why is there no respect? So, I watch what goes on in town. You don't see the police department physically, unless they're riding in a car or they're inside the office, nobody sees them, no visibility, people complain, they don't care.
You, you know, the board is aware, the board is aware of people complaining, again, people complain to the board a lot, okay? Understandably so, don't get me wrong, but the board doesn't have that control.
And that's why I'm asking these questions.
That's the reason I gave you my answer.
And it was a good answer.
Okay?
Yeah.
And if you ask me pertaining to the fire chief, I'm gonna tell you the same thing. The Board of Selectmen is, are not the, if the, the Board of Selectmen, even if it wasn't a strong fire chief, will not be the people that oversee the fire department. There used to be a Board of Fire Engineers, okay, five or six or seven people, that the chief reported directly to the fire engineers, okay? And I'm not saying, I think the fire chief is a little different than, than most, okay? I'm, I'm not advocating anything in the fire chief, I'm not advocating anything period, I'm trying to answer your question. But, that's the difference.
And you've answered my question, and I, I sincerely believe that we should go back and take away the strong chief feasibility. I watched the fire department with a new chief.
Mm-hmm.
He's respected in town, you've seen, his men are respected, he participated in Memorial Day Parade, his troops were out there, he was out there, the police chief was the only guy there, that's because he had to be there. They just don't show the town that they care about the town. And I have not been involved in town for nine years, and I decided to, now I'm sorry I did, there's a lot of things that are not right.
Yeah, and... A lot of people think the Board of Selectmen has more power than it does.
And, and you're right, because you get blamed for a lot.
Mm-hmm.
And the way to stop that is to take the responsibility, and if you're wrong, you get the blame. Now you're getting blamed for what somebody else is or isn't doing, and whether you like it or not, you get blamed.
Oh, yeah, we know that.
So, we're in Dubai.
Nothing, it's gonna go to a town meeting, it almost has to be changed at a town meeting. You asked me the question, if you wanna go back to not a strong chief, it has to go to the town meeting, and the town people have to vote to, to reverse it. We, we don't control it, we can't make a change.
How do you start that? You guys aren't happy.
I think that, I, I understand what you're saying, but I think you have to remember one thing, though, the only time really to do it...
Is now.
Is now.
And I understand that, that's why I'm saying what I'm saying.
That's the only time, you can't do it once they're in there.
That's why I'm saying what I'm saying, once he's in, you can do it, so. You have the same situation, same scenario.
If you ask me how it, how it would take to do an article on the annual town meeting, how is, is it hard to get an article on the annual town meeting? You go down to the town clerk's office, okay, and tell, tell you want a petition, okay? You get a petition with, I don't even remember how many it is on the annual, twenty-five signatures, I think, okay? The board then, and I'm just saying, the board then has no choice, other than to put that article on the town meeting.
Okay.
Okay? And then it's voted on, yes or no, either way, and I'll, and I'll give you one example. Warren used to be part of the Quinn, I don't know if you know what the Quinn bill is, but I'll try to explain it. The Quinn bill, the state passed a change law back, I don't know, twenty years ago or so, saying that anyone that had a degree, it could get paid fifteen, twenty, twenty-five percent more. The kicker was, they pay half and we pay half. Well, we paid our half and kept paying it. About, I don't know, ten years ago, five years ago, the state came in and said, well, hold it, we're not paying our half anymore.
Well, they got sued.
And suddenly, they got sued by everybody.
And they won.
The town of War, what the town of Warren did at that point, is kept on paying, kept on paying the, our half.
Percentage.
And then, at the next annual town meeting, we did away with the Quinn bill, but we didn't hurt anybody that was on the Quinn bill, what we said was, anybody that's receiving, was receiving money through the Quinn bill, we're gonna continue paying you with that as a bonus, because you were on it before we decided to eliminate it. That was something we said we went through, through an agreement to do, anybody new that comes on that has a Quinn bill, doesn't get any mon, extra money for it. So, I'm just, that's, I'm just kind of explaining how the process works. But that's, so it all it would take, if you had an article on to change it back to a, to a, not a strong chief, I remember, I'm gonna tell you one other thing, remember, you are also putting more power in the Board of Selectmen's hands, okay? That's all I wanna make everybody understand.
But there's three of you.
That's right, I'm just saying, it's just all you have to remember is, is it puts, puts more power back in the Board of Selectmen. Can you commit a, can you commit and hang the Board of Selectmen easier? Well, absolutely.
Right, but you're a common...
Absolutely.
Okay, and that's what I feel, we don't have in this town, accountability, and everybody can be ruined by power.
Mm-hmm.
People that can use it for the betterment of the community is what we're looking for, not for personal gain, or for lack of interest in the town, because I'm a selectman, look at me. We don't need that.
Mm-hmm, exactly, and I will say one other thing, people, this gets bad, people think the board knows everything that happens at the police department, far from it, okay? Far, far from it. Number one, we have no more right than you, or you, or you, to go down to the police department and say, show me the records, okay? We can't do that, okay? There's records down, all the records are kept at the police department, they're the custodians of the records, if anybody wants a record, they have to go down there, and the police department has, has the right, has to be the ones responsible.
That's wrong.
Okay? But if... That really wouldn't change, though, even if it was, even if he wasn't a strong chief, that's, that goes by state law, who's responsible for what?
For certain...
For that certain thing.
Right, okay, I agree with that, but there are a lot of things I've heard going on in this town in the last six months, I shake my head.
Mm-hmm.
And there are things that are being suppressed by the police department, that's their business, you're not involved, it's not your business, which you should know about.
I think, in my personal opinion, please...
That's what I'm asking for.
My personal opinion is, I think anytime, anything happens in the town of Warren, that the town of Warren is gonna be responsible for, I'm not talking about me, I'm talking that the Board of Selectmen should know everything that's going on, not names and stuff, I don't wanna know names, okay? Because that, I just don't wanna know names, if there's an accident with a cruiser, I want the board to be aware of it, okay? If, I, I just think it has to be responsibility.
I totally agree. Accountability and responsibility, they go together, and I feel very strongly, and I'm on another committee, and when I started, that's my second session, I said that this town is holding nobody accountable for anything that happens. Nobody, nobody gave me any static, and I said, the problem in this town, I pointed to everybody, you're the problem, because you don't do anything of it.
Mm-hmm.
Nobody agrees with me. And hopefully, with these committees, and what's happening here, things should start changing for the better, but people have to be accountable, if you screw up, you screwed up, and here's what happened.
Mm-hmm.
Say it, the hate it is ten times as bad as admitting it.
Very good, all right. Correspondent.
Uh, the winner of the Lucky Duck Race at Lucy Stone Park, the winner is, excuse me, first place, first prize, excuse me, was John O'Neill of Warren, second prize, Joanne Sauer of Warren, third prize, Martine Storm of Warren. Response from Timothy O'Brien regarding Emergency Management Director and Deputy Director's position, due to time constraints and the commitment these positions require, he has respectfully declined the town's offer. Mr. O'Brien has offered to provide an interim solution for, for filling the director's position, and would be pleased to meet with the board to discuss.
Could we ask him to come in? I think we have a couple of things already for the next meeting, but see when he's able to come in, maybe even, it had to be at six thirty. All right, we have, next item is a request for a food vendor permit from Aaron Dunn. Is Mr. Dunn here? Okay. Then I will turn it over to the board and see what the board would like. But, who can give the background, before we should tell, we should tell the people what the background is.
Well, Mr. Dunn is a gentleman that has the museums up on Main Street, he wants to put an addition on the house up there and turn it into a food store, I guess, uh, prepared food, between ice cream, chicken, hot dogs, hamburgers, whatever, and he wants a permit up there to do that. He has to go to the planning board first, is that correct, Becky?
Mr. Dunn came in with two, if, if I may, he came in with two separate requests, one to do, um, a food court downtown in the municipal parking lot, which is over, um, under the Board of Selectmen's jurisdiction, and also the Board of Health for the food permits, so that's for what is before you tonight. His other one is for twelve ten Main Street, which is in the Village District, so, um, what he is proposing would ultimately need to go to the planning board for a special permit and site plan review. He has not submitted those papers to, to my department yet, so the only thing we're really talking about tonight is, is what's before you folks here, and he went from food truck to a food court.
Yes, the last, the last thing he's putting in is, is putting up two ten by ten tents, um, he wants, he's gonna have some kind of freezer down there, um... His hours, his hours are crazy, he wants to, well, my thing, he wants to open at two o'clock in the morning.
What? Well, what happened to the other idea?
It's not, it's not something that I'm gonna agree on.
He has approached the Board of Health and tried to, you know, go forward with receiving a permit, he needs to, he needs to get a service state certificate, uh, he would need that permit, he needs our approval, the hours of operation are, are long, in my opinion, during some of these days, he's gonna need a generator out there running consistently to keep things powered up, he's gonna have to have cold storage, horrible water supply, the two tents are gonna take up probably three, at least three spaces of parking over there. The liability is on town property, and people are walking around, trying to go up there to purchase goods. It's really kinda sketchy as to how it's gonna be operating. So, I'm, I don't know if we're ready to, I mean, he's not here to discuss this with us, but, you know, the request has been made to the board, I don't know if we wanna receive from there, if we wanna table it, or if we wanna vote on the request now, being the information that we presently know.
I'm gonna make him appear.
Why doesn't he rent cake yet?
That was my question. Have some space available. And that's the other question, he could be selling hamburgers and hot dogs in front of other businesses that are out there that have the overhead of a lease and rental of property, which, you're taking away from them.
Be a nicer one.
It's gonna be loud. Generator, he's gonna need a pretty strong generator, power up the equipment that he's listed in here, or what the items he's trying to sell, it's not just hamburgers and hot dogs, he's talking steaks and ribs, and it sounds good, but, you know, being open until 2:00 AM and...
Right downtown. How about the, are they renovating the railroad station too, they have some plans for that?
They were, I don't know where that project is going at this point, but...
That might be a kind of a problem for them.
They could have parking in there, they were planning on utilizing that parking lot also for their business, so...
And then next year with the downtown design, they're gonna close all of it off anyway?
Yeah, they're going to advertise, probably in September, somewhere around there, to finish, to complete the downtown design, and to do 67, but that hadn't been done already, they're gonna do that, which would be Center West Warren, and then the rest of it in the Center of Warren, and do the downtown project besides. That's a multimillion dollar project. And, in my opinion, I don't see how we allow that there.
Are we in motion?
Are we in motion?
I will make a motion to decline the request to seek the permit from the board. I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, question, Becky. He's, we already denied the request for him to use, we just did that. Now, he was also asking for a vendor permit?
Well, that was for the municipal lot.
Okay, so I wanted to make sure of it.
Which Lorena did take the money, but she held on to it to see the outcome of what was going to happen, so we'll reimburse him his money.
And, you know, with the, with all the hours and stuff down there, that would take up, you drive by in the morning, that's exactly where everybody parks.
Plus, you know, in speaking with Mr. Lacy, he's the Chair of the Board of Health, he said, you know, and probably Mr. Nardi could speak better to that than I can, you know, a portable, somebody would have to inspect that every time he's set up, to see if, you know, the temperature of the refrigerator was right, the hot foods were right, the cold foods were right, so it would be probably a logistical nightmare.
And if he's in the process of trying to receive a service safety certificate, it's gonna take six to 10 weeks. You know, we know what it went through for the village, you know, to get the permit up there, and it takes some time to take the exam. You know, in my opinion, you should take the exam, obtain the permit first, a service safety certificate from the state, and then move forward with this, because there's a fee for that, it's $225 to take the exam. Not cheap. So...
All right, well, just please inform him that we declined the permit and the use of the municipal lot.
So, we'll reimburse him his money.
Yep. Next item on the agenda is notice of intent to convert land, Chapter 61A, Michael Starzi Act for Weir Road and Spring Street. Anybody here on that account? I haven't much luck tonight. Okay. I don't know what the board wants to do with that, we do have a little bit of information, and I asked what they want to do. 61A basically means they've gotten low taxes, because it's an agriculture restriction. In order to take it out of tax, 61A, they have to take, pay some bad taxes, not all of it, but some bad taxes, then they'll be able to build on it and do whatever they want. Right now, all they can do is agriculture. And, under 61A, just wanna check, I just wanna make sure, something. Yeah, on 61A, again, the town has first right of refusal, but this strictly is, they're going to, I think that, they wanna put in a solar farm there, so...
They wanna change it to a lease or a solar farm.
They wanna change it to a lease now, that's kinda strange, because we've never had the land, they wanna take it out of 61A, so that they can use it for a lease, the solar farm. So, the question the board has to answer at some point in time, is do we want to notify them that we're not interested in the purchasing, basically, because we don't have the money? Or, and after that, it still goes to Conservation, and Conservation has to say, "They're not interested either." I will turn that over to you gentlemen.
If we're not interested, if we're not interested, why don't we just send it to Conservation and get there?
But we would have to sign off.
We have 120 days, from June, I think it was, when it came in, so maybe we should table it and get more information before we vote on it tonight?
Well, I don't think we should vote on it tonight, why don't we do this? Table it for tonight, send it to Conservation, see what Conservation has to say on the matter, because they'll have to sign off anyway, so they can sign off first.
Is this the same group that has been installing previous?
No.
No. This is a new one.
Does he have the permits for that project yet?
No, he's going to the planning board currently.
I mean, why would you wanna take it out of 61A before you for sure get the permit?
Well, it's confusing these eyes, because of the fact, the owner is the same, it's just being leased to somebody else.
Right.
And I will also say this, and I said it to the board before, I am a, not in a butter, but I'm in a butter of a butter, as I live on Summer Street, I'm not voting on this, so... It's gonna be up to you two.
Yeah, we're gonna table it now anyway.
So, we're gonna table it, send it to Conservation, ask Conservation what they would like to do with it, and, you know what, send a copy to Planning Board also. All right, next item is Treasury Warrants and Invoices.
Treasury warrants, okay. I will make a motion that we approve Treasury warrant 1.7, in the amount of $43,517.30, dated 6/30/2014.
Motion made and seconded, any requests for discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. I will make a motion that we approve warrant number six, in the amount of $39,709.47, and warrant number seven, in the amount of $27,754.67, dated 7/21/2014.
Motion is made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. And I will make a motion that we approve warrant number eight, in the amount of $38,690.95, and warrant number nine, in the amount of $584,259.57, dated 7/28/2014.
Motion is made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion that we approve the minutes from May 8, 2014, and, can I do all three?
Yep.
The minutes from May 13, 2014, and the minutes from July 15, 2014.
I will second the first two, I can't second it, any other one?
Yes, so, the first two.
First two.
Made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
I will second the last one, all in favor?
Aye.
And extension?
Extension.
Okay. All right, the number 10 is other business, and it's a resident concern for speeding on South Creek Road.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I spoke to the chief, the chief sits up, radar, different places in the town, on a rotation. He was up there on his regular rotation, but, whichever one, on that duty tan. I also spoke to Tom about putting up another sign maybe, and he said it's, you can't do that without the state getting involved.
To the state road.
So, he's not doing that.
Okay.
Also, while we're in the same complaint, he was talking about the visibility coming out of Jones Street. If you go up and come out of Jones Street on the left side, the bushes are all kinda growing out of the, the houses on the corner. Tom is gonna find a pin, he's gonna find a pin to find out where the road, our territory is, or going to talk to the people and all that, so we can trim that down.
Okay, very good. Anything else?
Nope.
All right, you should send, if we had a, all right, letter, send a letter to them saying that it's now on the agenda to be part of a regularly monitored system, and we will continue asking the police to check up there. Yes?
Hi, my name is Eric, and I live right on South Creek Road, and I'm in the triangle between Washington Street and the South Creek. And, just on those three houses there, it's less than 300 feet, but there are 10 kids. And, I have a radar, and sometimes I go out there and check out the speed, and I have pictures where people going 43 or 45 miles an hour going up, and I'm not gonna tell you how much that I caught them going down. I noticed that when I'm there, when I'm there with my kids in my front yard playing, I put a cone right in the middle of the lane to make them slow down. I had put posts over there, saying, you know, 25 miles an hour, and everything. People tear them down and everything, but that's okay, I'm not complaining about that. But, it is very dangerous, they go, I have my neighbor who's a police officer in town, and he said, "Well, I caught a couple guys going almost to 60 coming down here." So, I think it's really, it's a really dangerous town over there.
What time of the day do you think you're accelerating most of the speeding?
Well, since we have so many variety of, you know, traffic going through, you know, it, there's no really a time where they're not speeding. I can tell that, you know, in the afternoon, you know, maybe, you know, after 3:00, you know, to 6:00 or 7:00, people coming back from work, they're speeding. Early in the morning, they're too. A few winters ago, there was a, there was a car who actually went in, almost went into our property, and kinda like, you know, he crashed right in front of the property, they destroyed the fence, and they almost fell on top of our property. And they, she was coming uphill. So, I think it's, you know, and the road that he was mentioning, what happens with that road is, because of the way it's a curve, so when you go up there, you can't see who's coming. If somebody is coming at one of those speeds, you know, like, my neighbor who's a police officer says, "I can't wait to see one of those accidents happen sooner or later." I just think it's very, you know, you know, I have pictures where I can show you how fast these cars are going, and it's just ridiculous. So, me and my concern, one day, there was a car, a guy who came and his tire fell off, and the tire rolled into our property, hit in our deck, and, you know, it was a complete boom! And we go out there, and he was there, and he, and I tell him, "How fast were you going?" I was in front of the police officer and him. "Oh, I was going 20 miles an hour, and then I had, you know, a squirrel came in front of me, and I had to, you know, avoid it, and his tire went shooting right into my house." And I said, I said, "Son," I said, "you know, I can calculate from where the markers of your car are, and where you ended up, and the distance, and how hard your tire hit there, I can calculate the speed of you were coming." "You want me to do that?" He says, "No. I can assure you, I haven't done it, I haven't caught it yet, but the buses are going over 25 miles per hour too, with kids." That's one of the reasons I don't have my kids going on the bus, because I see them speeding right in front of my house, really bad, over there, going up and down, with kids.
The only concern I, we're definitely, when I went by the other day, I did notice the cone you put in the road with the sign on it. The only concern I have about that is if somebody actually hits that cone and causes an accident, are you gonna be liable because you placed the cone in the road? On the side of the road, I, you know, it's not a problem, but if somebody's actually come around, and let's say they were speeding, and they hit the cone you placed in the road, causing an accident, or they veered off the road, can they come back at the land, the homeowner who placed the sign in the road as an obstruction? I worry about that concern, because I saw it there today. So, I would, you know, caution you from doing that, and putting that out there. We're gonna look into this, and I actually have a meeting with the chief later on this week, and I'll bring it up with him when I, when I meet with him, but I would be cautious about putting anything in the road to slow them down that might cause an accident.
I understand that, I honestly, I put it on the sides too and everything, when I put it in the middle, they do slow down.
Well, they do, but I just don't wanna see an accident happening.
And I'm afraid, my kids play in my front yard, I have tires coming out of my, in my property, I have cars coming into my property, it's a 25 mile per hour zone, if somebody's coming faster than that to have an accident, they're truly coming in a lot faster. And I'll take, I'll take your advice, and I'll put it on the side, I'm okay with that.
And I'll speak to the chief, I'm meeting with him this Friday, I will bring this up when I meet with him this Friday.
Yeah, even, I spoke, I spoke with the chief about a year ago, I said, "How can I do to get one of those signs and saying your speed is?" You know, when you can, you're driving and you see, and they were talking and talking, and said, "Well, we have one here, but it doesn't, it doesn't work." They said, "Let's put it," and he says, "It doesn't work, let me fix it for you." I offered to fix it, and he's, and nothing happened. So, I'm really, if you tell me what to do, I'll do it. You know, if I have to go, you know, outside Warren to get a, to the state police to get something like that, I'll do it, honestly. It's my, the life of my kids, playing over there.
You wanna get back?
Yep, I will.
Very good. Anything else? Okay, our next meeting is two weeks from tonight, on August 12th. Might, it's right now, it's gonna be at 7:00, if we have to have Mr. O'Brien committed at 6:30, it'll be posted. So, depends on what we have, how heavy the agenda is for next, in two weeks, if it's not too heavy, it'll be 7:00, if not, we'll change it, so Mr. O'Brien can be at 6:30, we can just, emergency management type. Other than that, is there anything else to come before the board?
I, one other thing, I'm sorry, I forgot, during other business, I would like to propose to the board that we entertain the thought of doing monthly department meetings, a member of this board, to conduct that with our assistant, with the department offices within the town, to have a monthly meeting in the morning, when everybody's in the office, it's on their, it's during working hours. I'm an advocate of this, I would really like to get the departments together, meet, discuss town business, discuss policy and procedures, make sure we're all on the same page. It's nothing that's gonna take more than a half hour to an hour, the agenda will be set, I'll have the secretary there, I'll report to the board, and do what we discussed after the meeting has taken place, but I think it's important that we start, the board used to have meetings, a ways back, so I would like to possibly entertain getting back into that this fall, and hosting department meetings, and I will gladly volunteer my time to proceed with that.
I have no problem with that, but you, my only concern is this, if there's gonna be two members at the Board of Selectmen there, please remember to post the meetings, I can't make it in the morning.
Are you going to have meetings with the superintendents, or are you gonna have the commissioners?
Department heads or everybody?
Department heads, I think.
Or be the commissioners.
Yep. So, my only concern is make sure it's posted 48 hours ahead of time, and if I can make it, I will, but if it's in the morning, it's gonna be very tough for me to make. Other than that, is there nothing else to come before the board? I'll entertain a motion.
Excuse me, would anybody like to volunteer to be a delegate to CMR PC?
Oh, I'm sorry. If the board wishes, I will continue doing that, since I'm already a member of the Metropolitan Planning Organization.
I have a motion to appoint David to the...
CMR PC.
Ultimate Member, CMR PC.
I will second it.
Motion is made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And extension, one. Thank you, everybody, for coming.